Bobby, I'm just gonna share the screen.
I now call the annual organizational meeting to order. Newly elected board members Butch Farrow, Carbone, and Frederick have signed their constitutional oath of office forms at this time, and will also verbally accept the position of Board of Education member. Have you all signed?
Signed.
Signed.
Rick?
Signing.
Okay, let me know when you're ready.
It has been signed.
Okay. Mr. Butch Farrow, do you accept the position of Board of Education member?
I do.
Ms. Carbone, do you accept the position of Board of Education member?
I do.
Mr. Frederick, do you accept the position of Board of Education member?
I do.
I will now call for nominations for the President of the Board of Education for the 2020-2021 school year.
Bobby, I nominate Dave Butch Farrow for President.
Nominations. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Dave, you are now the President of the Board of Education, and I turn this meeting over to you.
I've never seen somebody move so fast. At this point, we'll take nominations for Vice President of the Board of Education for the 2021-2020-2021 school year.
I'd like to nominate Dan Feinberg. I second that, Pam.
Is there any others? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Thank you. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we are going to... Oh, thank you. Congratulations, everyone. Honored to do this. We are gonna have a heck of a year. We are gonna have a lot in front of us, and I couldn't be happier with the people we have to make this work this year, so... It's good to be moving forward. Next, we're gonna move to our appointment of officers.
I'll move the appointment of officers at number five.
Thank you, Pam. Is there any question on any of these?
No, I'll second it.
Thank you. Dan, that was Hal seconded Pam made the motion.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose it? Thank you. Any abstentions? No. Next, are other appointments? Can I get a motion? I think some of these, we can go down to H.
So I'll move other appointments A through H as listed.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Rick. So we had a second from Rick and a motion from Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Any abstentions? Okay. Next is the appointment of a representative and alternate to CASPA, which is the Capital Region School Board Association. Rick, this is a group, it's sort of an offshoot of the other state school board association. Every one of the regions has its own group, and we happen to be in the Capital District School Board Association group. I will just add, and others can jump in, and Pam was part of this for a lot of years as well. This group has done very little lately. But I think in the current year, it's gonna be really important for us to have representation on this group, and hope that they're going to really kick into gear a little bit better this year. So, do I have a volunteer?
How frequently do they meet?
Rick, was that you?
Yes, how often do they meet?
Well, I can tell you this year, the last two years I've been on that committee, and I think they've had, in two years, Susan, correct me, five meetings maybe in two years?
Exactly.
Sounds about right.
They haven't had many.
Yeah, I looked into it earlier today, and it was five or six in two years. Usually... The hope was that every other month, we'd be getting back to some kind of schedule like that, Rick. We usually do two people, because if one can't make it, the other can go, or if both can make it, they both can go.
I mean, I don't mind doing it again, since I was just so overwhelmed with it this past year, so...
You did a good job with it.
You were...
I appreciate it, Dan.
Rick, would you like to be a second?
It would. It would be an honor to back up Hal, sure.
Well, I think one of the other nice things is that do meet, it's a good opportunity to talk with people and meet them.
Okay.
So I think that's a nice one, so, thank you both. Let's do Jane, and we'll accept both of them. Next is a voting delegate to the SCOTIC PTA.
I've done that the last two years. I would like to continue.
Can I get a second person? As well, who would like to?
I can second for Pam.
No, no, we'll do that in a minute. I need an alternate, an additional alternate here.
I think that's what she meant.
I think that what Kim was saying.
Kim, are you saying you'd be alternate?
I can do alternate for you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I thought you made a motion for it.
I'll be your hand.
Perfect. Appointment, so can I get a motion for INJ?
I will move INJ, as discussed.
Okay, so that's Hal and Rick, and Pam and Kim.
I second that.
Questions? Second is coming from Hal. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Any abstentions to that? Okay, next is K. The appointment of Extracurricular Activity Fund Treasurers.
I make a motion that the Board approves item K, as submitted.
Pam, can I get a second then from you?
Sure.
Thanks, Pam. Any questions on this?
Who was the first?
It was Hal.
Okay.
Hal was first, you were second.
Fine.
Any, no questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Great. Next is the Health and Safety Committee.
I would like to continue with that also.
I think that's a great idea.
Is this something we should, could have two people attend, like we have for the other two with CASPA and PTA?
We could.
Too much?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind throwing my name in the ring for that too, if you wanted to.
Yeah, I think that would be great, because of Dave's experience, so...
Yeah, I think Dave would be great there.
So is everybody up there, we do Pam and Dave for that position?
Yeah, there's no reason we can't.
Can I get a motion?
I'll motion at point, Pam and Dave.
I'll second.
Representative.
Thank you, Kim. I didn't hear who yelled second.
Rick would like to second.
Rick would second that.
Rick would like to second.
All in, any questions about that? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Anyone abstain? Okay, thank you. Next, we can go, we got M, N, and O.
I will move M, N, and O.
Thank you, Pam. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions on these? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Thank you. Next is the appointment of the Board of Representatives to work on board policies with the superintendent. I think this is gonna be a big one this year. Because I think that there's gonna be some new expectations and rules in place that we have to live by, and we gotta make sure that our regulations and our policies sort of meet those standards that might be coming down. That's just a thought.
Is that something you can do?
Who's that?
Dave, is that something you can do?
Well, I don't mind being one of the two people.
I know Pam is...
I'd be willing to help out as well.
Pam was in the past, and I don't know if...
I'm willing to do it. It's, you know, we didn't do a lot last year, but I think you're right, this year may be more.
Well, I'll put David and Rick and Pam, if we need some extra assistance, if you don't mind, we'll call you in to help with that as well. Sound okay?
Want to repeat that, Dave, please?
I said we do David and Rick, and then Pam, if you don't mind, if it does turn into being a lot, we'd probably, you know, would welcome you joining in with that group.
Sounds fine, thank you.
Okay. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll motion to the P.
Thank you. That was Kim, and second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Dan.
No problem.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Next is our designations.
I move designations A through C.
Thank you. Any, I need a second.
I'll second.
And was the first, Dan?
I'll second.
Hal seconded?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Thank you. Next is the, to designate a legislative liaison, which was Mr. Potlavani's role for the last number of years?
So how, can you talk, I haven't signed up for anything, so I'd be interested in this, but what's involved in this? How would, how do you get the information, just by reading the TU?
You have to, every legislative hearing? No, it's really, it's checking, it's really checking any kind of website that might have legislative information on. Dan, the TU has a good section on this. The Education Department has like a press release section that sometimes has some good info. It's really just trying to stay on top of what is taking place in the papers around education, or on the news around education.
I mean, I'm willing to do it if no one else is interested.
Dan is selected, unless anyone else would like to do it?
Good job, Dan.
I second.
It's an honor. It's an honor and a privilege.
I'll third.
I believe I heard Rick second. Hal, you were first, right? Was that your...
I think Dave was.
Oh, Dave motion, okay. And then who was second? I couldn't tell the voice yet.
I think Hal did second and third, yep.
Okay, it was Hal, thank you. Any questions about that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Thank you, Dan. Next is to designate board members to serve on the Audit Committee. Hal, I know you had...
Dave, can I jump in here a minute?
Yes, you may.
Okay, last year we had a slight error. Of the three people that you designate, one of them has to be the designated chairperson. We can't have four people on the Audit Committee, because then it becomes a board meeting.
Right.
That said, anybody can attend Audit Committee, but out of the three people who are gonna be the members, one of them should be chair.
Yes, thank you. Hal, you had expressed interest?
Yes, I do, again.
Okay.
Hal, you are a chair, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So I think Hal should be chair again.
That sounds fair. Another two people.
I'm happy to help out.
Thank you.
Do it again, too.
Kim. And anybody can attend. I actually attend all of them myself, just to hear what's going on. But those three will be our official audit members, and Hal will be the chairperson. So get a motion.
Hal, Rick, and Kim?
Hal, Rick, and Kim. Hal is chairperson.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Pam motion, Dan second. Any questions? And all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? I think Hal, Rick, and Kim, and Hal taking the leadership in that, that's a really important committee, and we have a good record going with our audits, and I think it's because we put a lot of energy in it. Our business office is, does a lot of hard work on this. Drew and company, so...
We are very lucky on that.
Yes. Next is authorizations.
I move authorizations and miscellaneous actions.
Thank you, Pam. Was there any questions on these? Okay, if there's no questions, I will ask, all those in favor?
For a second, Dave?
I'll second.
I thought, did somebody yell? I'm hearing things, I swear to God. Kim seconded. Pam made the motion.
Correct.
A lot of, it's the paper I'm hearing, not the voice. I apologize. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? At this point, we have pleaded our annual organization meeting, and we will start with our annual, or I'm sorry, our regular meeting of the Board of Ed. And we will start with a pledge allegiance. A pledge allegiance, flag, the United States, and to the Republic for which it stands, nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, ever and ever. Everybody. Tonight, we will be suspending again the hearing and privilege of the floor because of this being a remote session. For anyone in attendance, virtually, I would ask that if you have a question for the Board, that you please submit it in writing, and CC Superintendent Schwartz on that, and we will try to get back to you as soon as possible on your question. Next, I would turn it over to our superintendent for her comments.
Okay, so the first thing I would want folks to know is that the New York State School Boards has just reached a decision Thursday of last week that this year's School Board Convention is going to be virtual and over a two-week period. I'm not quite sure, we don't have details yet of what that means or what that's going to look like, but certainly as soon as we have those details, we will be happy to share them. Rick Fredericks, as a new board member, you're also going to need to attend mandatory fiscal training this year. And Bobby will help you by letting you know when those trainings are. I think you can complete it online. In fact, I'm sure you will be able to complete it online. But it is one of the requirements for new school board members. So I'll keep you posted about convention, and Rick, we will make sure you know when the fiscal trainings are available. I do want to talk to you a little bit about this plan, reopening plan strategy. So, so folks know, I've been working with a regional group for months, as you do know, actually. And we are working on overarching strategies that all districts can be a party to. As we have throughout this coronavirus shutdown, we are trying to take a regional approach. The information that was provided to us today is not yet quite detailed enough to allow us to flesh out our plans. But Karen, Drew, and I met this morning, divvied up some of the workload and are moving forward on those items that we can, awaiting further clarification from the Governor. Once we have our plan completed, we will submit it to the state, but we will also post it for feedback. In the meantime, we are going to survey both parents and teachers about their preferences in terms of returning to school. We are thinking that probably we will be in a hybrid model, and what that will mean is we will be offering instruction both in the classroom for some number of children, but virtually for parents who have already made it pretty clear that they are not sending their children back at this point under any set of circumstances. And while in the past, that would have meant they were going to homeschool their students, I think the onus will be on districts to provide that virtual instruction. But again, we're awaiting some clarity. The Governor did say in today's items that he shared that schools will remain open as long as their infection rate is under 5%. But that if it creeps up to 9% or greater, that they would immediately close. So you can see that that could affect different schools in different ways. We are talking about virtual schools, so that if, for example, we have a teacher who can't return because of their own concerns about health, they would become a fourth grade teacher, let's say, in a virtual school hosted by BOSI's and teaching all fourth graders, all of our fourth graders and potentially other fourth graders. So we're going to try to make sure we can cover all of those things. In today's guidance, it was also said that all students and staff will wear masks. That's different from what came out for extended school year over the summer, where only staff were required to wear masks. And although at that point, it was our understanding, and we did not do extended school year in person, we chose to go virtual. Although it was our understanding that students could opt to wear masks, they could wear masks of their choosing. My understanding is, we return to school, if this mask piece stays in place, is that it will be the district's responsibility to provide PPE to any students or staff who are unable to provide their own. Now, I make you aware of that because although Drew has been really on top of this, and we have had PPP, PPE orders with both our consortium through BOSI's and on our own, we are already finding there's a real backup in getting products. And you would recognize, we know we need pediatric masks, we need adult masks, we need spray cleaners. So I'm a little concerned about that, because not just us, but that could certainly be impinging everyone as they try to open. Once we have some feedback, we've done these surveys in early August, when I hope we have plan approval. And the Governor is saying he will decide between August 1st and August 7th, with a report out on the 7th, whether or not we're reopening, or if we are reopening, if we're doing that as a hybrid model. We will take our plans to the community, probably virtually. Maybe at that point, we will have some comfort in doing both virtual and in-person meetings. But I am not a believer that you get a lot of people to come together and start talking about a plan, especially when we only have three weeks, when we will actually have guidance to do the planning. And then have people making suggestions that we cannot implement, very much like what we saw at graduation and the school year. So we will take the lead on that planning, and then we will get feedback on the plans we develop. But that feedback has to keep our plans in alignment with what the Governor, the State Education Department, and the Department of Health recommend that we do. So, for example, this thing, wearing masks. I've taught elementary school, so has Karen. I try to picture second graders in masks. It's hard for me to picture. Not them in the mask, but how you encourage them to continue to wear them. So if a parent were to say to me, "I don't want our kids to have to wear masks, but the Department of Health and the Governor says you're going to wear masks, then we're gonna wear masks." So again, I'm all about getting feedback and help from people, but within the box that we can act in. So you'll be hearing more from me. You know that the next round of guidance is due out on Wednesday. Our plans are due, I believe, on the 31st, somewhere between the 27th and the 31st. Suburban Council is now going to meet, my group is continuing to meet, the reopening school group. I was on the phone with the Department of Health yesterday. I think Karen, Drew, and I would all say we're getting peppered with lots of information about what you could, should, might choose to do. But we will take our lead from DOH, SCD, and the Governor's Office. And then, you know, we'll make people unhappy, as we have throughout this process, because folks want what they want, and sometimes we can't give them what they want. But I do want you to know, we are working on this, we are moving forward, as are other schools. We are no more ahead or behind than anyone else. It's gonna be a pretty tight timeline. I would also share with you that NICE, out of the Mid-Hudson region, has a 41-page document they are sharing with their locals. And you know, it's not just teachers here, it's teachers, teacher assistants, secretaries, aides and monitors, who are all under the NICE banner. And that 41-page document talks about what NICE should be talking to us about as schools prepare to reopen. Again, I'm happy to have conversations. Karen and I, in fact, have one scheduled for later this week. But we aren't going to do anything other than what the Department of Health, the State Education Department, and the Governor's Office allows us to do, regardless of what other people might think we should be doing. So I tell you all of this, just in case you start hearing some grumpiness. But much as we found with graduation, we have to follow the guidelines and the rules that are in place, and we will do that. You have heard me say, "I'm all about compliance, because the person who holds the purse strings can cut off my money if I don't comply, and that's not ever a position I will put our district in." So thank you, Dave. That does it for me.
Okay. And Susan, I wanted to make sure I heard this right. We, we will probably do something to, with the public announcing it, but it's not gonna be a hearing in the sense of, "Give me your ideas," because the Governor and the Education Department are the ones giving us the ideas that we have to live by.
More than ideas, yes.
Yes.
And I think the mask piece is a perfect example. If they're talking social distancing of six feet with masks, it's not gonna matter if someone else says, "Well, I think three feet would be great." Because we will have to follow what the recommendations are.
Thank you, Susan.
But yes, we will get feedback from the public. Are we missing something? And we are gonna seek feedback now, because I'm also very interested to see which of our teachers are thinking they may not be willing to return, and which of our families, other than folks who have spoken with me directly, are saying they won't send their kids back here, back to any school. I think I had shared with you last board meeting, there's a national statistic expecting about 30% of families to keep their children home.
Yeah.
I don't know if we'll see that or not, but certainly knowing what that looks like would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Susan that folks might have at this point? Okay. Thank you. Next is a presentation by the folks from, the, I'm sorry. It's a presentation from our consultants on the Chartwell's Annual Food Service Program.
So Drew, what would you say about this?
Usually Jim and Heather are here in person. This year, given the COVID-19 situation, I asked them just to prepare a year-end summation for you to review. And in a nutshell, basically what Jim is saying in there is what he does, which is they review each one of our school breakfast of the month programs onsite during the year to make sure we're in compliance with SCD and with our contract with our food service provider, which is Chartwell's, which we just finished our 13th consecutive year with them. which we just finished our thirteenth consecutive year with them. They also helped me with the bid preparation when it's required by SCD to go out for bid, which we did a year ago. And they're instrumental in working with me during the COVID when we had to shift gears and shut down onsite preparation to a uh breakfast and lunch uh meals and wheels program, um, which we just finished up on June thirtieth. So it was a successful year as far as participation was up. We had no, no issues of non-compliance. We did a very good job with the March thirteenth to June thirtieth breakfast and lunch uh distribution to our families. So I don't know if there are any questions on on them uh to have around the report that we provided.
Any questions for Drew at this point about? It's a shame we have to do it this way because it they were always really uh helpful and better understanding where we stand in relationship to other districts as well, but this is the best we could do this year.
Dave, I do have a question that isn't
Go ahead.
With the presentation. But I was reading today that um the regions said if we have a hybrid model, we have to provide food in schools with the kids and also provides um food to this
Home meals.
Being at home.
Yeah.
So Chartwells would be responsible for doing both of these programs?
Correct. Correct. We would lean on them again uh to do that. Um, we know this summer, we're continuing the backpack program uh through our two churches with the food distribution out of Lincoln. As I've said all along, the need is there. Um, and so, yes, Pam, you are correct. And I believe that in the presentation materials, they also talk a bit about um federal dollar flexibility again, which we had this year because you know, through the COVID closure, we fed anyone who came. Um, you didn't have to prove you were a free and reduced lunch recipient. We fed all comers.
I thought that that is how I read it then. I did read that correctly, that you, we would have to deliver to anyone, not just the the free and reduced lunch peo- folks.
Correct, or or have a draft through like we did this year.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yes, but we did do deliveries, Dave. You're right. So, yes, it could be um again, that we will be uh providing breakfast and lunch for um anyone under eighteen, whether they are here or they are um learning at home. Another, another thing that remains to be seen.
Yeah.
Since these slides were made, uh, have you figured out or has Chartwell still figured out whether the Plexiglas type barriers are necessary in this upcoming school year?
The Plexiglas is illegal. Schools can't use Plexiglas. It's against education law. So there is a substitute that can be used. Um, Drew can talk a bit about that and where we're currently at with our thinking.
Right now, um, we have to see what the requirements are as far as serving meals. If they're going to be doing it in the cafeteria or in the classroom or some hybrid of that, before we determine uh what the physicality is of of a barrier and a lunch line continuation. So that all just starting to come through this week and we'll make that decision, but we'll be in full compliance whatever regulation comes down the pike.
In the school district purchases, the plug, the uh, that new material?
Yeah.
Not Chartwells? Okay, okay.
Chartwells just prepares the meals and serves the meals. All the equipment is ours, all that sort of stuff.
Okay. Is that part of the the items that you're trying to procure include with the PPE?
Uh, this Plexiglas just is coming up now as possible. So no, we've not ordered that. Um, I just found out about an acceptable alternative to Plexiglas today from a health and safety person in history. So it's all new.
Okay.
Costs about four times as much as Plexiglas.
Yeah.
It's not cheap.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Would that material be for in the classrooms or where would you need to use the?
Well, if we were using it in the lunch lines, Dan, uh, you know, to separate the servers and the youngsters, but if we go to lunches in class, there has certainly been discussion that children should be in pods. So you are with the same group of kids for whatever amount of time you're in school, that you don't leave your classroom except to use the restroom. And it's the teachers who rotate in and out. Um, and if we're going to serve food in the classrooms, that will take some new equipment that allows us to keep food at the not us, but Chartwells, to keep food at the proper temperature while it's delivered to the classrooms. As opposed to Plexiglas in the cafeteria.
Well, that same material also be needing to be purchased for the bathrooms also for separation between the sinks?
We don't know yet, Kim. We're s- again, we're waiting to see what the guidance is um that comes out. You could avoid that if you let one child go at a time, but then the question becomes who's going to clean the bathroom, disinfect the bathroom after each child.
Exactly.
That with our youngest children, there are uh bathrooms right in the classroom. So they wouldn't necessarily have to leave the classroom. But again, it goes back to who's going to be responsible for cleaning up. Um, we certainly do not have enough cleaning staff um to do that. Drew and I've had a discussion about that. Is this going to mean we need to hire additional cleaners or potentially a cleaning service to um assist us in in whatever it turns out the day is. Uh, Karen and I have talked about the fact that if kids can never le- leave their classroom and they don't get to go to the cafeteria, to recess, to physical education, potentially to art or music. I would not bring kids in for five and a half hours to sit um in a classroom uh for instruction. However, another piece of the guidance at present is um if we wanted to run, say, alternating half-day sessions uh like AM, PM, so half the fifth grade comes AM and the other half comes PM. We have to provide childcare on the opposite side of the day for children so that they have a full day somewhere, um even if it will not be with us instructionally.
You still have to clean the the desks and everything between courses.
Exactly. Yes, between those AM and PM sections. Um, the daycare piece, needless to say, would have me a little worried uh because I don't know how we would do that. Cap region is working again in the region with the Y and with private providers to see what they could offer us. Um, but also who would pay for that other half of the day is a question that well, we don't have clarity on at this point.
And will the curtains in the nurse's office um be considered okay, do you think? Or do you have to purchase the material again to put into the nurse's office?
We think we will be okay with the curtains. We have to have a place. We will need to identify a spot where if a child becomes ill during the day, they could be isolated till they can be picked up. Um, but then that will also potentially become a report to the department of health who would then determine whether the exposure was great enough to close the school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Susan, could you just is for the next, I don't want to get into it now because I've thought that the guidance that was given today had contradictory comments in it. Well, could we, could we be prepared the next time to just give a brief thing about what we might be doing with busing?
Sure, certainly. We'd be happy to do that.
I mean, I really don't want it. It it was so confusing. It's not.
Yes, yes. We can do that.
Right. And I I bring this up as part of this because of the getting the meals to the kids and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yes.
Um, thank you.
Certainly.
And we thank our our friends from um HMB consultants for this report.
Yes.
Um, next on our agenda are a series of um resolutions. Um, can I get a a motion for number six?
I'll motion for number six, the resolution approval agreement by in between Scotia Glenville Central School District and the Al- Albany, Skaharinge, San Diego, Saratoga Board of Corporation and Educational Services.
Thank you, Kim. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank. I heard Dan's voice first. Thank you.
Thank you. It was.
Any questions?
Folks, I just want you to understand what this is for. Um, again, anticipating that we may be going virtual again, that we may have some children here, but our oldest children out. Um, we don't have enough Chromebooks, uh, because we would want to have Chromebooks onsite for the kids who are here. And we would use a loner program as we did this spring. So this was really an unanticipated purchase. It's on an installment purchase, but it's for uh six or seven hundred additional Chromebooks. I'd have to go back and look. But so you know what you're agreeing to.
That's what I read. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Any abstentions? So passed. Um, next is number seven. Can I get a motion?
I'd like to move, we accept the gift of donation from the Glendal retired teachers of a red maple tree in memory of the late Elliot Ray.
Thank you, David. Can I?
I'd like the second, please.
Thank you. That was Rick, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Rick. Was there any questions on this? A big thank you to them. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose this? Anyone abstain? So pass. Thank you. Next is the uh approval of the extension of the food service contract. Can I get a motion?
I'll move the extension of the food district contract with Chartwells for twenty 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 twenty-one as submitted.
Thanks, Pam. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? So pass. Thank you. Um, number nine, can I get a motion?
I will move the memorandum of agreement between Scotia Glenville Central Schools and the Teachers Association.
Do you want to do of the, a couple of these, the the two Dan or just one at a time?
Sure, as well as number ten. And let's stop there for now.
Yes. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Hal. Any questions on these two?
Yes, can I get a pre- just a real brief explanation as to what what this is?
Yes, you may.
Certainly, I'd be happy, uh, Rick. So in the first instance, um, while we were uh closed, I had worked with Drew and on the advice of our attorney, we had asked the board to approve an agreement that said we would not be paying uh for co-curricular activities or athletics from the date of closure forward. The association grieved our decision in terms of curriculum. So let me just say that. They grieved our decision in terms of the co-curricular activities, not the um coaches. Um, and uh through a conversation with our district attorney and the board, we came to an agreement that um we can pay those co-curricular activity stipends for the period of closure. Um, mu- much of the work had been done prior to that. Um, I was asking people to provide us with dates and times when they had continued to work with groups of students or on a particular items. That demonstrated what they could do in terms of their clubs. So I denied the grievance. Um, and this appeared to be a way to bring that to closure. In the second instance, um Kathy Luick is a part-time employee. She's our committee on preschool special education chairperson. And uh she has taken over our um along with folks in Drew's office, our compliance uh to Medicaid rules. We have children who are Medicaid eligible and can claim back aid on that uh those services. But the paperwork reporting and keeping track of um who's doing what, making sure therapists have submitted their notes properly, all of the things that would allow us to claim that aid. Um, we need someone who can shepherd that and Kathy does a great job with that. So this is in addition to her part-time appointment.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, I've just said, Susan, that the Medicaid claims bringing quite a bit of money as well.
Yes, I can never remember.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact number, but it's
Drew just whispered to me a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Any abstentions? So moved. Thank you. Can I get a um motion for number eleven?
I'll move eleven, twelve and thirteen, which are the three agreements with the Scotia Glenville Secretary Association for Sharon Riggy, Allison Roscoe and Jane Kabor in recognition of the additional duties that they perform above and beyond their normal duties.
Thank you, Pam. Kim, was that you?
Yep.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions on these? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Thank you. Um, next is number fourteen. Actually, we've got fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, seventeen. Got a lot of them. Can I get a motion for the annual review?
Can we do them all together, Dave?
Um, yeah, we could do them together and then we could take questions on each one individually.
I'll motion to approve um annual reviews fourteen through seventeen.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Pam. Any questions on any of these? So these are certain ones. Um, Rick, just so you know that we 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 review on an annual basis. Um, there's a load of um education policies that we'll get into it a another time. We'll have that discussion, but um we do a usual annual review of these, this set.
And this, this was done before this meeting? As a board?
Yeah, there's no proposed changes in any of them.
Okay.
So it was, it's really just a continuation of. But yeah, it would be done. We would do this prior to the meeting. We'd have a first reading and then we'd do a a final approval the next meeting after that.
Thank you.
And we were distributed within in the packets that were
Yes, yep.
To our homes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Anyone abstain? Thank you. Um, next are what we talked about earlier, number eighteen and nineteen.
I'll motion to approve number eighteen and number nineteen.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Hal. Are there any questions on these two? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? So moved. Thank you. Um, next, we have some um appointments of of committees. Can I get a motion?
Sure, I'll I'll move that we appoint the committees on special education, preschool special education and the impartial hearing officers.
Thank you. Are there any questions on e- oh, I'm sorry, need a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dave. Um, are there any questions on any of these? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. Oh, and here's our lovely reports time. So um just a note, Rick, at one- So, um, just a note, Rick, at one, one of our two board meetings every month, we do reports and updates on the various groups that we discussed during the organization meeting. Um, and if there's something needs to be done, you know, at another meeting, we do that as well. But we routinely do this. Um, I noticed that budget got dropped off of this, and I noticed that safety got dropped off of this, so we'll make sure they're re-added back onto this again. Um, and board goals is also missing, so we'll add that for future meetings. The first one's CAPS, CAPSPA.
Yeah, they're doing a great job keeping us informed, so when they have a meeting, I'll let you all know.
Thank, thank, thank you, Hal.
There, there, there is, you know, some exciting news that now Hal does have an exciting backup on that committee, so that is some news in that report, so.
You can have a meeting of two CAPS.
Yes.
Next is the new legislative liaison, anything you have in the last seventeen minutes that you learned?
Well, it, it's been a really important time, and I've learned a lot, but I'm not ready to share it this week.
Okay, thank you. Uh, PTA.
No PTA meeting, no policy meeting, no safety committee meeting.
Our reports are pretty light this week. Um, we, we won't go into budget at this meeting either, because we didn't have any time to prep for anything like that. Um, and then we will, at a later meeting, I'll get into it during the new business. Um, communications.
I'll move communications, staff, placement of students with disabilities, and the minutes. I'll second.
Thank you, Pam, thank you, Kim. Placement of some minutes. Okay. Pam, you did say minutes, right?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Um, Rick, um, just so one, one quick word, because I know this is a new piece for you. Um, the recommendations to the board for the placement of children with disabilities. Um, we, we return those at our in-person board meetings, and we destroy those when we're at home. Um, these have pretty privileged information in them, and so we destroy them after reading them and discussing them if it needs to be.
If I could just interject that to securely destroy, we recommend that they're either burned or shredded.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Karen. And if you don't have that, you can drop them off at the, the central office and they'll seventy-three different X marks on the paper destroyed.
I will shred, then burn them, just to be very compliant.
Just to be super compliant, that's good. Are there any questions on any of this? If there's no questions, I will take, ask for those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Anyone abstain? Um, next are our internal claim audit reports. Drew, do you mind just doing a one, two-minute piece on what the payroll warrants are and what the check warrants are?
Sure, I'm glad to. War is basically a, a check register of all the checks by fund that have gone out. And by state law, education law, the Board of Education must review every claim before a check is issued, or they concede that responsibility to a claims auditor, which this Board of Education, as most do, has done, so we have a claims auditor, Doris Bunro, who's a CPA, actually reviews, adjudicates each claim. What you'll see is an A is for the general fund, if you see an A in front of the transaction, that's the general fund. The C is the school lunch fund, H is the capital fund, which is for our current fourteen million dollar project. So you'll see those warrants prepared as a general fund warrant, school lunch warrant, and then a capital fund warrant. We also keep a running tally for the board on what we call exceptions, where we didn't comply in the district with purchasing protocol, procurement policy. Last year, I think we had two hundred and sixty-six dollars of exception on non-payroll warrants out of thirty-one million dollars of claims review. The payroll warrant is our pay, is our payroll, so break it down, twenty-four million dollars of our fifty-five million dollar budget is payroll, and the other thirty million is accounts payable or other ongoing operations.
And if you don't mind, I would just like to compliment Drew and his people.
Yeah.
It's absolutely fantastic, only have one exception in an entire year. Great, great job, Drew, congratulations.
Thanks, Pam.
Yeah, we, we, for many years, we used to have a few, few exceptions, and I would just say the last two years, I think, folks, that it's really cleaned up, and this last year was just spectacular.
Yes.
Just great job, Drew, I think we all appreciate the fact that, that you guys are really on top of this. Um, so I'm going to go through each individual one, and if you have questions, jump in and ask, it's fine to ask different questions, sometimes certain expenses are things that you don't normally see, so. Payroll warrant number twenty-seven. Payroll warrant number twenty-eight. Payroll warrant number one. Check warrant, A forty-four. Check warrant, H twenty-four. Check warrant, A forty-five. And check warrant, H twenty-five. Any questions on any of those? Any questions on the treasures report? If there are none? Drew? Great job. All yours.
You'll pass that on to his people, thank you.
Thank you. Is one of them still in the room, or she left? Um, our friend Bobby. Um, next is other business. Um, I have a couple, but I open it up first to the group. If anyone has some other business? I'll just, I'll toss mine two out. Um, one has to do with our annual retreat, or I don't know what we'll exactly call it, but our administrative meeting, I'd like to try to get that in place. Um, as soon as we can. Some ideas around it, we're to have um, a discussion around board responsibilities, meeting the administrators, we could do a combination of different things. Um, but I'd like us to just start thinking about what we would like to do during that, that, um, time free. My next, um, area is these meetings. And the comfort level that folks have with returning, and before we jump on this, re- returning to in-person? Or it's my understanding that we are able to do hybrid meetings at this time. Um, am I correct, Susan, for, right? We are able to do a hybrid meeting for anyone who's, and this is quite understandable, is concerned about their health, and although we would do social distancing and, and masks and everything that we need to do, um, if folks are still uncomfortable with going out and coming to a meeting, um, we will definitely conduct a virtual, um, a virtual component of these meetings. So I, I, first of all, I'd like to get people's thoughts on that part, and I have a part B to that as well, so.
And I, Dave, can I jump in?
Please do.
I would also say to folks, although you are used to in the summer that we would meet here at district office, if we decide to have in-person meetings, we will either be in the high school B cafeteria or in Sacagawas Library, because there are two sets of doors, so we can have an indoor and an outdoor, and we can get us. And if we had any public, the public far enough apart that we could conduct the meeting in a way I hope makes people feel safe, but we would not be here at district office, we can't get as far enough apart.
I'm just curious of people's thoughts.
What, um, what would we do as far as, um, temperature checks, et cetera, if we had an in-person meeting again? Would that just be, it is what it is, and we just mask up and social distance, or do we take extra precautions for us?
I, I, I thought, I thought Hal, and excuse me if I interrupted you.
No.
I, I thought we would do the four-question um, questionnaire.
Yep.
Prior to the meeting, um, I don't know if others thought of something else, but that was my idea if we did in person.
I would suggest that if we do that, that you become also folks who use the app that we've bought into. And then you would submit your answer to the four questions and either get a color that says you can come, whatever the day's color is, or a color that's which is red, that says you should not be at the meeting.
And I didn't want to make it sound like I was pushing this, I, I'm in favor of it, but that's my own personal feeling, but because of the ability to do hybrid.
Mine may change from meeting to meeting, at the moment, I am trying to get over pneumonia.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure that at this point I'm ready to go out, even though I'd love to see you guys face to face. But I, I'm not even going to be cleared from my doctor till the, you know, like the end of the month or the beginning of August.
Right.
So mine is going to depend on that.
Yeah. Thanks, Pam, and you, I was concerned about you and your pneumonia, and that was, you know, once I heard that we could do hybrid, I felt more comfortable.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be missing anything. Anyone else? Thoughts?
I, I'd like to not forget the fact that there's a large percentage of the population that can be sick and be asymptomatic, so they may answer those questions and be green and good to go, but then bring COVID with them. Uh, those numbers are starting to ramp back up, there's, it's the country as a whole is not looking fantastic, so.
Yeah, like I'd be willing to do it, but I'm, if I felt like there was, we gained something from it. Right, that I'm not sure exactly how it would be better than what we're currently doing.
I think if anything, it's really the hearing and privilege of the floor would be.
For the public, right.
The public.
Right.
But let me also say this, um, just to make sure folks are clear. While I could suggest, encourage that you folks respond to four questions about health, because it's a public meeting, the governor's been pretty clear, we could ask people to mask up, but I can't ask them to do anything other than fill out a form as they come in that responds to those four questions, to Dave Nusaro's point. So, um, understand the level of safety, if you will, or security that we can provide you.
So, how about this, why don't we revisit this after our next meeting? Um, and we'll conduct the next one virtually? And then we will make a judgment after that for the next meeting? Everybody okay with that approach?
I think that gives us a better look at the numbers by that.
Sure. Okay. No, and I, and that's why I wanted to sort of offer it up, because the other part I wanted to add to this, um, and I'm sorry, just keep adding things here, um, we have never had such a response of people coming to our board meetings, or listening to our board meetings, or following them as they have now that we're recording them. Um, I, I think we've actually been in the thirties and forties of people hitting on our, our meetings. Um, and so that's a thing I want folks to think about as well. Um, maybe there is a way that when we do go back in person, there's some, some way that we can do some level of hybrid piece around this, um, to get more interest in even following our meetings, even if it's not coming in person or watching it immediately when it's happening, but listening in to a tape or something of a later meeting. Just something not necessary to kick it around tonight, but just to put that thought in folks' minds. Because I was, I was really curious when I saw that we had, you know, people watching or listening in. Those were my three, might have been more. Um, Susan already mentioned the other one. I, I was very confused reading the NISBA website. It's a two-day meeting that they're going to spread over two weeks, I'm not exactly sure what they meant, but it could work out really great. It could mean that we all are going to get to go. Um, I, I, I know those of us that have been in the past got a lot out of it. Um, we haven't been recently because of various reasons and, and, um, maybe Dan will get to present this year. Again, so. Anyone else have any new business they wanted to discuss? No? With that, we have the hearing and privilege of the floor, and again, um, I'll remind anyone that's listening in. Um, you know, before I do that, I do want to say something. I want to thank everybody that had anything to do with graduation. Um, I want to thank the board for their support in what they did, I want to thank everyone that's listening in of our administrators and, and Susan and Drew and everybody, Karen. It, it was the most incredible seven hours I think I ever got to spend on the school grounds, it was just magnificent, to be honest with you. Um, we're still getting people thanking us for our speeches, thanking us for how the day went, and I'd be remiss if I did not thank everybody. Those teachers who lined the, the walkway even in the rain. Those, Kim, unbelievable parking attendant, and now has a job at Saratoga Performing Arts Center when they reopen as a parking attendant. Um, chief parking attendant. So honestly, you know, those who were able to be there, I think felt the same thing I did, it was just heartwarming. Um, I just want to add that, so sorry I didn't bring that up earlier. Now I'll go for a hearing and privilege of four and say that, um, in lieu of the hearing and privilege of the floor, I again remind you that please send us an email if you have any questions or recommendations or comments you want to make to the board. Um, I will ask the board if there is a need to go into exec session. We all said, no?
No.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Hal made the motion, who would like to second? Kim will second. Um, I'd like to congratulate Rick on the conclusion of his first board meeting. And and, oh, there was, and, and just say thank you to everybody. Um, have a great week. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
I'll.
Miss you guys.
All, all, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to adjourn? I didn't think so. Buddy, be well, be safe.
Bye.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, Pam.